Good evening and welcome to the business meeting of June 15. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The treasurer's report for April 2023 is available in the business office. I'd like to open it up for public comment on any agenda item.
Good evening, I'm Janine Ruffo. I was going to say Board of Education trustee, but that was a year ago, not now. I know that on the agenda is Pride in Putnam Valley, which is honoring Mr. Joe Ferraro, and I had the absolute pleasure of serving with Joe on the Board of Education for 12 years, and I can honestly say that Joe coming off the board is going to be a loss to this community. He kept us thinking, he questioned, I think the words that come to mind is logic and rigor. So if something seemed illogical, he didn't want to do it, and if something didn't promote rigor for our students, he was not going to stand by that. He was completely a stand for rigor. But of all of the causes over the last 12, 13 years, Joe and I ran in 2010 and got on the board in 2010, so that's a very long time ago. We have high school students that weren't born when we got on the board practically. But when, of all of his causes, the late start for the high school was his flag waiver. For the first five or six years, it was all I could do. Again, you're talking about it again, but if he picked, he kept saying, 605, Roaring Brook, 13 and a half-year-olds, not okay. And it wasn't, and we stood for it, we put a commitment to it, and that's who Joe was, is, but was on the board. So he is a loss. I feel like I'm a better person because I served with him for those 13 years, and I hope we see him serving somewhere for the students and people in Putnam Valley. Thank you.
Thank you, Janine. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move to the consent agenda. Number one, please.
Resolved to approve Agenda Items 2 through 12 as contained on the consent agenda for this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments?
The consent agenda tonight is approving minutes of the previous meeting. It's approving CSE, CPSE placements. We're approving two programs at the elementary school this summer, the Summer Boost and the Kinder Camp, which will both run in August. We're approving some unpaid days for various staff members. We're approving additional work hours for staff members. We're appointing the Board of Education meeting videographer for the 223-24 school year, Dan Mahoney.
Dan.
We're approving contracts and agreements, including health and welfare with Carrington and a consultant agreement. We're authorizing the superintendent of schools to enter into employment agreements with contractual employees that hold individual contracts. We're approving general operating fund reserve adjustments. We're accepting the 2023 Stormwater Management Program annual report, and we're approving training days for a new employee by a retiring office assistant. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolutions pass. We're going to move into Pride in Putnam Valley first. Okay, we're going to devote Pride in Putnam Valley today to, well, let me go up to the mic.
Can you introduce yourself, please?
No, what? Talking to me? Okay, we haven't done this, Pride in Putnam Valley, in a while, but there was really, when we thought about the way to thank Joe for all that he's done for the students and staff of Putnam Valley, we decided that was traditionally the best way. So I'd like to present Pride in Putnam Valley to Joseph Ferraro, in appreciation and recognition for your commitment, leadership, and service from 2010 to 2023, to the students, staff, and community of the Putnam Valley Central School District as a trustee and vice president of the Board of Education. So, Mr. Ferraro? In recognition of his service, we are going to have a brick placed at the field. A legacy brick will be placed in your honor at the high school, middle school campus that says, "With appreciation and gratitude for your commitment, leadership, and service to the Putnam Valley School community, always focused on the students as your North Star." That's my favorite quote of Joe. So, because students were his North Star. Thank you very much for everything you've done. Okay, we're now going to have our 22, 23 school year, end of the year assessment data.
So I'd like to welcome up Ms. Jackie Levine to the mic, so I know she'll be joined by some of her administrative colleagues, so I'll let her introduce them as they come up for each of their sections, and this will be sort of a year in review, looking at our data for the last school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Loft, and thank you, Putnam Valley Board of Education, for this opportunity to discuss our amazing school district and the wonderful things that are happening here. I want to thank first and foremost my colleagues, my building principals, for supporting this presentation. They are partners in this work. We collaborate so often on many things, but they were true partners in helping to develop this presentation, and I want to thank them for their parts in putting the presentation together with me, but also their participation tonight. They were all very eager to speak on behalf of their schools, so I'm very excited to welcome them as we move through our presentation. I always like to start ourselves with our mission and vision, bring us back to our shared agreements, the language we use to talk about our school, and the lens through which we look at everything, including our data. The child is first and foremost. We are building that foundation for the future, and looking at our data, we want to make sure that we're always talking about what is right for our students, what is best for our students, and how do we come about the decisions we do in terms of looking at the data and the next steps we're going to take? What are we doing to best support our students? Just a little bit of enrollment data for us. At our high school, we have 503 students total. Seventeen of those students are IB diploma candidates, 37 are science research students, 59 are CTE students, and we have 58 teachers at the high school. In the middle school, we have 467 students total with 47.4 teachers. And at our elementary school, we have 548 students and 50 teachers. We've seen this before. This is the enrollment trends over time. You'll notice that there is that smaller group in the fifth grade, the rising fifth grade that will be next year, but in general, our numbers have remained pretty consistent, and we have large classes coming in, or normal-sized classes coming in, in the years after this fifth grade, this rising fifth grade. But this is just to recap on that enrollment data that we've looked at in the past. Okay, so we do have a little bit of an error here, but anyway, we have 96.3% of our seniors graduate in 2022. We've ranked second in the Putnam region for our graduation rate. Further, 94.9% of our economically disadvantaged students graduate, and we rank fourth among the 18 Putnam Northern Westchester districts for that data, which is really important to note. We often hear that economically disadvantaged students don't graduate and don't move on to secondary, so it's really important data to show here about our students. And we rank first in our region for participation in college preparatory courses, which include IB and APs. That means our students are academically driven, and that really speaks to the culture created here in Putnam Valley, a culture of learning and academic excellence that so many of our students want to excel, want to succeed, and take on those rigorous, challenging courses. This is just a brief recap of what happened this year. We don't have results for this yet. We won't have results until at least mid-July for the IB courses, and we won't have results probably until the fall for APs. It depends on when the state starts releasing the data and when it's publicly available to speak about. We don't, we're not always able to publicly speak about data even when it's been released to us. So this is just a recap of the level of examination that took place this spring at our high school. So when you think about that 19 IB exams over several days, and 173 students sitting for those IB exams, that's really an amazing number of how many students in those grades want to take those rigorous examinations. And then in our APs, we offer most of our APs in the ninth and 10th grade, so for our students, that many freshmen and sophomores to be taking on that rigorous coursework at that age is really a testament again to the culture of academic excellence that Putnam Valley brings. Okay, I'm going to invite up Mr. Matt Mello, our high school principal, and he is going to speak a little bit to the different types of assessments we offer, and then some of the results that we've seen from the 2022 school, 2122 school year. Again, our 23 data is not available yet, so that will be available in the fall, and maybe we could do another presentation in the fall to go back to that. Matt?
Thank you, Jackie. Appreciate the opportunity to be able to come here and talk about all the excellent things that are going on in the high school. As you can see on this slide right here, it's just giving you a listing of all the different upper-level courses that we offer. IB assessments on the left, and keep in mind, IB assessments are for 11th and 12th graders. And it moves over to Regents exams, which largely fall in ninth and 10th, and there's two Regents exams in 11th grade, and AP exams, which we have pushed down to ninth and 10th grade. So we're allowing our students to take challenging courses as soon as they get in here in ninth grade, and these are courses that they're measured up against people throughout the country, and in the case of IB courses throughout the world. Our 2022 Regents data, this is just a snapshot of our comparison to Putnam schools and where we ranked. I think there's a couple of things that we want to make sure that we understand about, you know, the numbers that are up here. The last time Regents exams were given was in the spring, well, in the winter of 2020. There were no Regents exams given in the spring of 2020 or 2021. Actually, in 2021, students could opt to take a Regents if they wanted to, but they were given a Regents credit if they passed the course in 2021. Same thing happened in 2020. So this really was the first year that students got back into taking Regents exams, and so, I'm sorry, in 2022 was the first year that they got back into taking Regents exams. So, you know, that's what you see there. I'll say, you know, one of the things that we do really well at Putnam Valley is we focus on the social-emotional wellbeing, and one of the things that we looked at during the pandemic is we wanted to make sure that that pandemic wasn't taking them away from the important connections that they make, both in school and out. Our teachers were told, you know, let's, let's make sure that we're focusing on the emotional support that these students need facing the turmoil that they were seeing within the pandemic. I mean, you can imagine there was a lot of fear and things like that, and we wanted to make sure those students felt safe, and that was the number-one focus of every single class that we had here, and I think that's the one thing that we do extremely well at Putnam Valley, is we make great connections with students and support them so that they go on being successful in the future. So you can see there, the data, it's based on, this data right here is specifically based on the Level 3 scores. Oh, there we go. That's a little better. It's a Level 3 scores. Here's a bigger shot of this, and so, and then it has a comparison of us to other Putnam schools. You know, it's a small sampling when you talk about, you know, six schools in Putnam County. It's not like we have a large area that we're comparing it to, but the New York State data, we score higher than average in every, every category in the New York State data. So here's a snapshot of our county and then the New York State data afterwards. Here we have a look at our IB scores from last year, and we're really excited that last year, I think there was 113 seniors last year took IB exams, so try and imagine seniors working all the way through the end of May on really rigorous exams, and we saw the same thing this year. Last year, I think we had 157 in a graduating class. This year, we have 132 in the graduating class, and we had just over 100 students, 100 seniors taking IB exams this spring, this May, which is amazing to see how many students are working hard all the way through their senior year. The other thing that I'd like to note about this, the IB exams, this was actually, 2023 was the first year we actually faced the entire array of IB exams. Because of the pandemic in 29, I'm sorry, in 2020 and 2021, IB only took the internal assessments as an assessment. The internal assessments are assessments that students choose a topic in every given subject, and they do research, it's like about a five-page research paper, or it's an oral speaking presentation, and so during the pandemic, knowing they couldn't bring kids in and jam them all into a crowded testing location, IB made a switch and just went with the internal assessments. IB scores are based on both their internal assessment and their external assessment. Last year was the first year that we offered the external assessment for IB students here at Putnam Valley, and the external assessments last year were pared down because IB, like New York State, like the College Board, recognized that students, their pathway to learning was greatly inhibited by the pandemic, so they didn't have the same kind of opportunities. Therefore, they recognized that they need to pare down what they were assessing students on. So last year, IB exams, there are two days of exams, two days of external assessments, and so because of those two days of external assessments, last year, they cut it down to just one, and then this year was the first year we had the full array of IB assessments, internal assessments and external assessments. We're really excited to get to July to see how well our students did. We are very proud of our students and their scores.
Not to interrupt, Mr. Mello, but I do want to include additional information for the Board, of which you may or may not be aware already. New York State has adopted something called the PLAN pilot, and this is basically a performance-based assessment inquiry that the, that the state is doing into what types of performance-based assessments we may want to look into going forward to move away from those very standardized rote memorization assessments we've been giving in the past, and instead adopt more either CTE or IB type of performance-based learning, work-based learning assessment for students, so that all students can shine. And the IB is something that the state is mentioning frequently within this PBL approach, this project-based learning, performance-based learning approach, and I happen to be on one of the work groups for the professional learning, so I meet with the state regularly in my group, my work group, and I'm part of a focus group as well, giving them feedback and information because of my experience, both at the BOS's end, but also with the IB work we do here. So I just wanted to put that on the Board's radar, that this work, IB work, is something the state is really looking into very seriously now as a future for assessments. So we may actually see a shift in general away from those rote memorization and standardized Regents tests to more IB-like assessments, which actually will put our high school ahead of the curve. It may actually make our own high school a kind of like a learning center for other districts to come and visit to see what this is all about and learn about performance-based learning, so.
All right, so again, like I said, we're really proud of our scores for the IB exams. As you can see, we had six diploma candidates last year. All six of them earned the diploma. The year before that, we had 13 diploma candidates. All 13 earned the diploma. This year, we have 17 diploma candidates, and we're really excited to see, I'm sorry, we're not upset, we have 13 diploma candidates this year, and we're really excited to see where they're going to go with their scores as well.
Mr. Mello, on, seeing as the average grade in the school and average grade worldwide, there is some disparity, and I realize it's really our first year, and it's not even the full year, the full array of evaluations. The, is it assumed or expected that our averages might be lower than the worldwide, which might, which would include probably all kinds of different things, probably highly heavy in, in private schools or in schools that have been doing this for 10, 15 years or even more, if it goes that far? Is that kind of where we're, we're expected to be as we're coming into this as a, as a new school?
I would completely agree with that. That's, that's where we're expected to be. A lot of things that you have to keep in mind, IB schools internationally are private schools, right? So try and imagine, you know, the opportunities that, you know, students have in other areas of the world. We're talking about fairly elite individuals that end up in those schools. I actually had a cousin who worked in Myanmar, and his children went to an IB school in Myanmar, and it was all these ambassadors and their children, so, you know, you're talking about a different dynamic or demographic there. I've also been to the UNICEF, United Nations International School in New York City, and it's a similar situation there. And we're talking about a pretty elite group of students that end up in those schools. But, you know, I think the thing to notice too, recognize, we're, we're still young, right? We're toddlers when it comes to IB. And, you know, at the beginning of the year, our IB coordinators, Vindi Gregorio and Rob Leibther, sat down with our IB teachers, and we talked about the IB scores. You know, you know, some of the things that IB teachers weren't ready for, say, last year with the external assessments, because it was the first time we were getting them, giving them, and, you know, making those adjustments, you know, different understanding going into year two of the external assessments. So the teachers were able to see what it was like the first time, and now it's really our sophomore year of all the assessments, and we're hoping that it's a step, you know, a step in the right direction and another one. So there's a learning curve, you know, with anything that you do, and definitely a learning curve when it comes to assessments and the strategies and things like that that you need to prepare the students.
I remember when we were exploring becoming an IB school, that, you know, when we were doing the research about it, I remember watching YouTube videos of students that were getting, this is all about their evaluations they were doing, and it was clearly a pressure cooker. And a lot of these schools were Philippines and everywhere else that I was watching these videos. It was truly super-high-pressure situation with really, really high expectations, and not that we don't expect that of our students, but it was, it was on a level that was kind of out of control to, as far as to let students have a life in addition to getting prepared for these evaluations. So I just wanted to kind of let the public know that all, that our scores are kind of where we would expect them to.
I think there's one other factor that's worthy of noting, and that's the fact that we truly offer open enrollment for IB courses. So even some of the most prestigious public schools in our area that offer IB don't offer IB for all, or they track students into IB courses, and I think obviously we have huge numbers of students participating, challenging themselves in rigorous curriculum, and taking assessments sometimes at the end of their senior year because of our open enrollment, IB for all mindset, and that's something that many schools, even public schools in our area, don't offer, right? Students are tracked, only certain grades get in, you have to be part of the accelerated program to, to have the opportunity to participate in these courses. So I think that's another thing that really makes us unique, is offering opportunities to challenge all students, and maybe that impacts our test scores, but I think the overall benefit to the, to the students in Putnam Valley is much more worthwhile than what the test scores are.
And I know that this was touched on earlier, but I just want to reiterate, we don't have the data to do data-informed instruction at this point, because this was our first assessment. As we do these more, we'll have actual data to go back on to see what areas or gaps do we have that we can then work on in those classes more with our students.
Matt, I have a quick question. I'm sorry. And just, I just need, I need you to educate me. I know the APs, four or fives, receive college credit. How about IBs?
IBs go up to, so IBs are a scale of seven, and I think it all depends on the university. Actually, if you were to go to our website, you know, the PV, the high school website, there's an IB logo there. You click on that, it brings you to our IB website for our school, and there's actually there a link to colleges and universities, who will give you credit, and credit for, for what. So I would say this, in an HL course, if you're getting a five, six, and seven, you have the opportunity of gaining college credit. But what we've noticed with APs as well over the course of time, I mean, I started teaching AP courses 16, maybe it's 18 years ago, but, you know, back then, you know, pretty much anybody that got a three was getting college credit for an AP exam. But because there's so many students going to college with AP, you know, courses under their belt, there's less and less students gaining that AP credit in college. More likely, they're giving, giving credit for that, you know, Math 101 course, and they're allowed to take another elective, but they're not taking, they still have to complete the whole, you know, credit sequence that you would for college. So it's changed dramatically in the last 10 years, who and what gets credit. I can say this, though, if you go for the IB diploma and you are successful with a grade of 32 or higher out of 45, those students at SUNY's are getting 32 college credits for that. So it's a full year of college knocked out of their belt, you know, at SUNY. So it's, it's, that's a great telling statistic there. Like I said, HL's, higher-level courses, a five or above, they'll consider that for college credit. I know my son is going to college, and because he's, he's got a couple different, even though he didn't get a five or above, he's still allowed to go to a higher-level class because of the IBs that he took.
What about locally? Like, isn't it true if a student, not an IB diploma candidate, but a student just takes an IB course, if they score, I believe it's a four, they get that certificate for completion? So that's really technically, they don't call it passing, but is it true that a level four is what IB considers passing of the exam?
So if, if they get a three, they'll get a certificate for a three.
Oh, so three or higher is really passing?
Three or higher, yeah. So, you know, I don't, I guess we're calling, you know, we're going to say a two falls under that level, but if you look at the work that they're doing and the benefit that they're getting from that work, we have, and you were alluding to that before, Dr. Loft, the diversity of students that take IB courses is unbelievable, right? The students that are going and, you know, to BOS's to take tech classes are enrolled in higher-level language and literature, you know, courses, or they're in an IB film course. It is amazing that every student has the opportunity to take these courses, which are really college-level courses, truly college-level courses, because of the type of rigor and requirements of reading, writing, reflection, you name it. Even, you know, the process, the production, everything that they're doing is just at a different, it's a different level. People come back from college and they rant and rave about IB courses and how well, doesn't matter what it was, at standard level or higher level, how well they prepared them for college.
Matt, can you talk again about the college credit? You had said you scored 32, and that would take care of a full year of college? That, is that correct?
Yes. And, and you have to, like, so 32 out of 45 is, it's a really good average. When you think about six IB courses, three of them have to be HL's, higher level, three have to be standard level, and then they have the extended essay, creativity, activity and service, and theory of knowledge, all have assessments that earn them points as well. So they need to get 32 out of 45 out of all those for, for SUNY's to then give them a full year credit for college courses.
Wow, that, that's impressive.
Those are the sophors.
I sat through some of the, those meetings we had up in the library, that was the service end of it?
Yes.
And very impressive what those young people were doing. Each of their projects just astounded me in how they presented them.
Yeah, I know. I go on and on about IB, you know, I apologize to everybody out there, but it is remarkable to see what our students are doing. We just handed each one of the diploma candidates, we had a ceremony the other day during lunch, and we handed them all a binder of their work. If you ever get a chance to look at that, you are going to be blown away by the, you know, whether it's the question they came up with or the research. know, whether it's the question they came up with or the research that they had to do. It is incredible, you know, what's going on in those IB classes. And that doesn't, it doesn't matter if they're a diploma candidate or like I said, it could be somebody that's taking a, a class at the Bosse's Technical Center.
That would be a good presentation to a board meeting. That work. The culmination of that work.
Uh, yeah, and I, I, I don't remember when, but I think it might've been two years ago that we presented some of the work that they did. And we could easily do that and would love to. You know, unfortunately, I can't comprehend half the stuff that they are writing, it's way above my head, but we could definitely have students come in here and explain some of the work that they did.
Outstanding.
Next we have our AP exams. Keep in mind, we had ninety-six students in ninth and 10th grade taking AP exams. That was this year in 2023. It was very similar. What do we have, one hundred and fifty-nine in 2022? So one of the things that's really interesting about this, I taught AP World History, that was the only class that we taught here in 10th grade, only AP class in 10th grade. All the other APs used to be in 11th and 12th grade and we pushed them all down to ninth and 10th grade. So now on my best year, there might've been forty-five students taking AP World History. And now look at the amount of students in ninth and 10th grade that are attempting AP classes and they're doing well. So you can see there, AP Language and Comprehension, which is in 10th grade, AP World History, and it's remarkable that these students attempt this class in ninth grade because I don't know if they quite have the academic maturity for an AP class in ninth grade. It's very difficult, right? AP courses have always been difficult because of the level of writing and reading comprehension and it takes a bit of time to develop those skills. Next we have AP Computer Science, which is kind of multiple grades. So we can see anywhere from 10th, 11th or 12th graders in AP Computer Science, AP European History, which is in 10th grade. And then art classes, at the beginning of a year, a student opts to take an AP art class and then they also get to choose their path in AP Art. They could go drawing or they could go studio art design. It's been a real busy week, but it's been a really good week. You know, we had a great athletic awards ceremony the other night. I just wanted like one more shout out to our 2005 field hockey team. It was amazing to see all of them back in the building with their children. I mean, like if you had an opportunity to witness it, it was, it was like one of the feel-good moments of the year. And then, you know, Tommy Hirsch, who dedicated, I don't know, eighteen years here as a volunteer for Putnam Valley. So I just want to, you know, big thank you for everybody that made that possible. And another congratulations, Tracy Parson and, was it Tracy? No, that was her maiden name. That was when she won it. Tracy Parson and, and Tommy Hirsch and the girls' field hockey team. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
So, sorry, I just think it's worth emphasizing, I would encourage everyone to think about AP courses in Putnam Valley High School as an opportunity for students to dive into rigorous curriculum, challenge themselves. I would caution us to compare our AP results versus other districts because we're in reality comparing performance of ninth and 10th graders versus performance in 11th and 12th graders. So I think it's important for us to provide opportunities for ninth and 10th graders to struggle with content and strive to achieve very difficult things, but I think we'd be a little bit foolish to expect the outcomes to be the same amongst ninth and 10th graders as they would be comparing them to their peers in 11th and 12th grade. So for as long as ninth and 10th graders are offered APs, I think it's a great thing and it's a rigorous opportunity for them, but I don't think we should ever expect or compare our AP results to others because it's an apples to oranges comparison between the grades. So it's something that's hard because when they publish it in the paper or they stick it on the website, there's no disclaimer that Putnam Valley has ninth and 10th graders, but it's an important thing for at least everyone up here to acknowledge that it's a fabulous opportunity for those students, but it's, we're not comparing apples to apples.
Well, it's also the, 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 the primary driver of this is intellectual growth versus performative, performative grades. So I mean, if, you know, and it's interesting, I just saw something with Neil deGrasse Tyson on StarTalk, he was talking about, is college becoming just something that gets done and it's not real, really important, et cetera, et cetera, all kinds of different things? His conversation was, even if you're not going to use any of the stuff that you do, same thing with, you know, prior to college, it is about the rewiring of the brain and being able to think and come, you know, with broad concepts. So the idea of understanding that freshmen and sophomores taking really, really challenging course loads or opportunities to, to learn in different ways than they might have learned up to that point, that there's, there's a piece of, of that, you know, is part of the education piece as opposed to simply the numbers on a page.
Well, and I would hope that the teachers of those courses emphasize the, the challenging nature and that it's not about the final grade, it's about what you've learned about yourself as a learner and, and how you meet challenges that are difficult. I used to say, one fourth grader, she'd say, oh, this is really hard. Well, if you'd like it easy, I can take you down to first grade and you'll do really well, but will you be happy there? Well, no, that's baby stuff. So, I mean, it's that, it's the attitude of challenge that's, that's important and it's important for parents to understand also so that they don't judge based on just a test score.
So I do have a question. What, I can't, I mean, I already lived through this, but what do we offer in 10th grade for English?
So that's AP, the, the AP English course is offered in, in 10th grade.
And then in ninth grade, you take standard level English?
Yeah, so students in ninth grade could go Regents or Honors.
Okay.
Or it's, there's no Regents in ninth grade, but it's a, you know, your, your Regents level course and an Honors course in ninth grade.
Was that long ago? You can't remember?
You know, it feels like way almost, it's a bad sign.
Four years, oh my.
It's a bad sign.
And hey, Simone, your ninth grade year was interrupted by, by something. I don't know why, can't remember.
It's a blur.
So the one thing I'll just add in there, I, you know, I spoke to all the AP teachers at the beginning of the year, right? Because when you look at the AP scores, you're like, okay, this, this, this doesn't look great, you know, our scores are a little bit lower than we've always seen in the past. And I said like, all right, so we, should we re-envision this? Should we talk about maybe not doing it this way? And every one of them said, no, no, this is so much better. We don't care, you know, that the scores aren't there. They're, the skill development that they're working on is at such a higher level and it's going to keep them better prepared for whatever they do next. So we had those conversations and then talked about, okay, what can we do to start developing those skills? And again, it's always like, you know, what can you build, you know, before that? You know, so I think bringing the IB, push APs down to ninth and 10th grade, what can we push down to the lower levels? You know, like do we need to keep, you know, backward mapping to look at things that we could do so that they're better prepared to face every level? And that's a process, right? That's not going to take, you know, a year or two. That's something that you have to look at over the course of five or 10 years to really understand if you can do that. Sorry, thank you.
That's okay.
I have one more comment though, not a question. I would, I would like, you had mentioned Jackie, that the results for the Regents will be out this summer. I would like to see a fall presentation, especially on the Algebra and Geometry and what we're doing on that early in the year so we could address it as needed.
Sure, I can say that this year the state didn't release the data until November. So it does depend on the state sometimes, but hopefully the Regents data will be out, all state test data will be out by the time the fall begins so that we can plan for a data presentation sometime in that beginning of the fall.
Thank you.
I am curious though, in terms, I'm a little, I'm a little stuck on like the, the test scores are like a little interesting. So do you think that having students, like yes, there's a lot of new like skill development and stuff like that, but are they really, like are students really like fully grasping and like holding on to that skill development? Or are they kind of just like getting a little bit and then going on to the next high level, but they're still behind? So is it like still, is it a constant state of being behind where they're like not ready at each level, but we're still having them at that level? Or is it just like, they're grasping some of it and it's good to, like I agree it's good to challenge students and stuff like that, but I do think it's a little tricky when you see the test scores and like twos and threes, it's like a little nerve wracking because it's just like, we're presenting the content, but is the content really being like absorbed, if that makes sense? So I'm a little bit curious about, about like your stance on that in terms of just like, are students really grasping the content? Like yes, I don't want it to seem like we're shoving like skill development and new content and it's great content, like yes, I just feel like some students aren't able to grasp that content either at that pace or that like academic maturity level yet. So do you think like it's a little bit, it's harmful for students to be taking those higher level courses as we're still seeing the trends of them not really necessarily improving and having kind of consistent scores?
So I, I think you outlined, when you go to college and you need to do a research paper, you, you outlined a really interesting study there, right? To be able to track students who attempted AP exams in ninth and 10th grade and track their performance through IBs in 11th and 12th. And do you see increased achievement or is it the same as their peers or is it worse than their peers? I think that's something that, obviously we don't have that data yet because we have had, we haven't had any students that have made that progression, but that's something that would be really interesting for us to track. And I wholeheartedly believe that students that are exposed to challenging content earlier in their academic career and persevere to at least get through the course and attempt the test, those, those lessons learned will carry them through the next few years. But that's an interesting study though, off the check and see is that actually true? Is that, it's my hypothesis, but is, does the data prove that to be true? That'd be interesting to see.
My concern would be the child's self-worth. Having taken the course and then not having done that well on the final exam, what does that do to the child? We can't forget that. Every child is, you know, needs that, that boost of confidence and, and security in what they pursue. It's always been my concern at the higher level courses, when we try to push all the kids in that direction because not all the kids are capable of doing that or wish to do it.
Right.
And that's been a real thorn in my side with the former superintendent who thought everybody in the universe had to go to college. And she used to throw me out of the admin meetings that we had and say, Mr. Alverio, take a walk. Losing your temper again. Yes, I was losing my temper because Dr. Wills, you don't understand that there are children who want to pursue the trades and don't want to go to college. And they are as noble as a kid who goes to Harvard. And that's been my focus and my scope.
Probably make more money than the kid in Harvard too.
You'll make more money being an electrician or a plumber. You're darn right, you will. But that, we have to keep that in our mind at all times. I don't ever want a child to feel they're not important, they're not successful, they're not worthy. They have to be. And, and that, boy, that was always a, a thorn in my side as an administrator.
So we should just keep it in mind, right? No students in ninth and 10th grade are being pushed towards any of these courses, right? These are not the only course they can take. These are students that are opting into challenging themselves. And you know what? If they're not successful and they realize that, they can fall back into a regular Regents level or Honors level course. So there's certainly no reason, we're, we're not pushing anyone in this direction, it's just an opportunity that's afforded to students. And to answer your first question, we'll have that information in September. If we look at ninth graders who attempted an AP exam in ninth grade, how many of them signed up for another AP exam in 10th grade? And I'm willing to bet that our attrition rate between those two is very low. That if you were brave enough to jump in in ninth grade, you're brave enough to try again in 10th. But that, that's data we'll certainly have.
Understood, understood.
Early enough.
Yeah, and there, there's a couple of things to think about. This is the third year that we have this model of the APs being pushed down to ninth to 10th grade. Keep in mind, the first year there was no AP exam because it was COVID. And so last year, and I gotta say, this is one disappointing thing about College Board and AP, they made no adjustments to their exams last year.
Right.
Where everybody else, New York State, IB, everybody else adjusted their exams because they knew the student didn't have the same kind of time, you know, in, in a classroom in the same kind of learning that they were doing in the past. But AP didn't, it was the same exam that they had offered the years before, not taking that into account. But, and then the other thing, Sam, or Mr. Alveria, that I'd like to say.
Seven's fine.
I, I started this off by saying, the thing that we stress first and foremost to everybody in our staff is the social emotional learning of that child. It is, we want you to make connections with that child.
You did state that.
That's like, so that is first and foremost. And like Dr. Luft said, in ninth and 10th grade, these are electives, they don't have to take them. So they're choosing to try and challenge themselves. And I think if you ask them, yeah, of course they're going to be disappointed when they see that too. But I think the following year, if they take another AP course and now it's a three and then they go on to IB and it's even better than that in IB, I think then they'll start to understand, hey, there was a little bit of struggle, I might've say failed at this level, but it, it ended up leading to me being successful later on. I can say this because I failed a lot. So, you know, you, you, you get to learn how to overcome those things. All right.
Thank you, Beth.
I've seen like, even in my experience of like, I'm not an IB diploma candidate necessarily, but I take a lot of the IB courses. And like in my like conversations with IB diploma candidates, it is a lot of like emotional stress and the social stresses, it's a lot, it could break a person down. But I will say that like our IB coordinators and like our teachers, and I will say especially our IB coordinators do a really good job of like, like kind of compromising and like working a lot of things around for the students to try to make it like a less of a burden. So I will say that, I will say that.
Just to share a quick personal story reflecting on what you're saying, Sam, regarding students and their emotional state, their, you know, self-esteem when they are not succeeding in a course that maybe is not designed for them. When I was in school, I was an honors student, I was in all advanced classes, I was always the student pulled to the back of the room for a special reading, special math, until I got to seventh grade. And then I could not do math. I struggled mightily. And I was supposed to be in seventh grade honors, but my school was recommending I stay back. And the social shame and pressure of that alone, well, it caused me so much distress that I was fortunate enough, they did not put a barrier in place and let me move on to honors. By the time I got to ninth grade, reality was setting, setting in and by 10th grade, I was in regular classes, I stepped out of honors. But had I at that point in my life been prevented from making that decision myself as opposed to being forced into a class that I didn't feel represented and didn't feel challenged in, that would have been, I think, more harmful to me as a student. I can't speak for all people, but if we're thinking about the self-esteem of students and whether or not we're telling them, yes, you can instead of no, you can't, I think we have to send the message of yes, you can and we're going to help you get there. That's what I would share.
And I understand that and that, that, that's a, a good personal perspective, Jackie. Thank you for that. My, my concern has always been the fragility of, of these young people.
Absolutely.
Because they are fragile. And God, you, you see the statistics, suicide and things like that. It shatters me when, when I hear about that or read about it or see it on the news and I, I, I want our institution to, to be one of pride and, and self-achievement and self-worth. And, and that's all I'm, I'm stressing.
Of course.
And I know that our teachers are very caring on that regard. And Matt, you, you've often, you always start your, your, your talks with, you know, first and foremost has to be the, the mental, mental integrity of these kids. And I, and I agree with that, the emotional integrity. So we, we just need to keep it in mind at every level, that's all.
Oh, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And to piggyback on what Simone was saying, so Simone, you, you make an excellent point. And we do have to look at, look at the foundation we set through the years in order to make sure our students feel prepared and ready for those more challenging classes. So it goes back into where do we have gaps in our data, in our curriculum where students may not be reaching their full potential or grasping the concepts and that is reflecting in our data later on down the line.
Right.
Because if a student comes in with a deficit, it's hard to get them, you know, to move further along and be on level with their peers. So as we go back, what we're doing in this presentation is sort of a backwards design model. We're showing you where our students end up and what they're achieving at the high school level and we're going to show you what happens through the years and what we are doing as next steps to be able to support our students to be those high achieving students and those students who are, you know, balanced and principled and knowledgeable as we work toward that learner profile.
I was just going to see if there's any more high school questions or Travis has been slowly walking towards the mic for a half hour. Matt's gotten up and down three times. We're good? Moving on?
We're good, we're good.
We are ready.
Thank you.
So speaking to that, as we build that bridge from the middle school to the high school, it's important to keep this in mind, focusing on how our students come into the middle school and then ultimately how they leave and what we hope for them as they enter into the high school world. They come in as fourth graders, right? They're fifth grade, but they're, they're just graduated fourth grade. These are babies, right? They come into the middle school as babies. We move them through the years. Um, they transition from their pods in fifth and sixth grade into the seventh grade, where they have a teacher for every discipline and they have um a different type of schedule, less minutes in the day for certain courses than they had in the earlier grades. Um, and then by the time they leave in eighth grade, the hope is that they will be prepared with the skills and executive function skills in particular to move into the high school. And one of the reasons we are so diligently moving forward and implementing our MYP program is because we want to make sure our students have those executive function skills and the project-based learning experience and their interdisciplinary learning experience to be able to set them up for success when they do reach the high school and the rigor of the high school. So that's kind of where we're going. And I'm gonna ask my colleague Travis McCarty to come on up as we present our data for the middle school. The data you're going to see here is based on our New York State data and our iReady data. That's an assessment platform um that we are using. Uh, that also gives us um benchmark data throughout the year about how our students are doing. And uh, one of the reasons we're holding this presentation um now in this late period of June is we won't have our state test data for this year, but we do have iReady data. And iReady data tends to be a pretty good predictor of how we're doing. So um, in addition to this, our teachers use teacher-created informal assessments in their own classrooms to tell them how their students are doing, to plan small group instruction where necessary, and to target skills that they see our students are missing. So um, with that said, I'll move on into our presentation. I do wanna just say a quick disclaimer. I do believe unfortunately in downloading our presentation into a PowerPoint, some of our text is overlapping on our boxes, so I apologize. I plan to fix that and send the board a fresh copy with all of those errors um rectified. But anyway, Travis, come on up.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Travis McCarty. I have the privilege of being the principal of Putnam Valley Middle School. And as uh Jackie mentioned, uh, this data you're looking at here is from New York State. It's actually last year's data. Um, but you'll see our fifth grade um was 51% proficient. Um, this is in the area of English Language Arts. Tends to be our strongest grade um for a couple of different reasons, but sixth grade is at 84%, seventh grade is at 58%, and last year's uh eighth grade is at 53%. So that's uh proficient levels, meaning threes and fours. And as you can see, our sixth grade ranked fourth in the Putnam Northern Westchester region for English Language Arts. And you'll see here, um, the blue represents our school district, uh, I'm sorry, our school, the middle school, um, compared to the yellow being the district as a whole. And then the, I guess it's an orangish peach color, um, would be New York State.
Travis, before you go on, what does the high percentage of students not tested in grade seven and eight due to your scores?
Yeah, um, it excludes our students uh from the data. So um, one of our biggest goals this year um has been taking advantage of opportunities. So I preached from September all the way through. Um, we had less of a refusal rate um this year.
Excellent.
But I would still love to see 100% take these assessments because I think it gives more of a true measure of our district as a whole. I've had numerous conversations with many different people about why families were given the option to refuse when we are using this data to drive our instruction and our choices. So it, it does skew our data, um, which is why when we take a look at our iReady data, that will be more of our students um taking those assessments. Um, but also keep in mind, we don't put those in our gradebook. Um, they don't go on a transcript. Um, so there's pros and cons to both types of assessments, um.
Well, I'm glad, I'm glad you've addressed it with parents.
Yeah.
Um, sometimes it's just, like, I, I'm just, don't wanna have this argument anymore. If you don't wanna take the test, fine, don't take the test. But it's not, in terms of what it, what Simone was talking about and Matt and Jackie, um, in terms of students challenging themselves and looking at things as a challenge rather than as a, uh, I don't know, a wall that, that can't jump over, really changes their mindset. If, if they try, just the trying um is important. So, uh, you know, I'm glad that you're, you're still talking to parents about it and still bringing it up and, and I hope to, that the 17% in fifth grade, you know, or 11%, that they stay at that percentage.
I hope so as well. Um, again, this was last year's data.
Right.
So we did have fewer refusals this year, for sure. I don't have that data in front of me, but I do have that data. Um, and I was happy to see that change. Um, slowly but surely, they are untimed assessments. They are created by teachers. And um, it's a standardized assessment that changes with time, that can only better prepare students for the high-stakes assessments they will take in high school. So why not accept that challenge and prepare? We have families that spend thousands and thousands of dollars on tutors and taking practice exams and all this. This is free. This is in front of us every year. Um, take advantage of that opportunity, and that's what we continue to preach. And again, we're seeing slow gains in that area. But um, the other part too is, you know, these students start to take these exams in third grade. And by the time they come up through middle school in seventh and eighth grade, they have a little bit more of a voice. So when you see that sway a little bit in what parents will email you or write to then refuse, um, I ask our families to stay strong and know the advantage of taking these opportunities because it can only help our children take, take that.
As a parent of an incoming middle school student and an outgoing middle school student, there's certainly a sense of adult bullying by middle school students. Uh, and you, you see it just by the number of opt-outs you receive the day of the test and the day immediately before. It's the same story, none of my friends are doing it, why are you so mean? Uh, I can, I should have recorded the conversation in my kitchen. I just looked at them and said, get out of the house. But there's, some people aren't willing to fight that fight. And, and middle school's challenging years and some parents are finally, just like, fine! What do you need me to write? Go away. And that's something that I, I hope we'll continue to see less and less of moving forward as we change the narrative, not everybody's opting out, right? These numbers used to be over 50% just a few years ago.
Yep.
Uh, so we're moving in the right direction and the hope is as we continue to move in the right direction and parents know that, no, not every, your kid will not be the only child sitting in the classroom taking the test, no matter how many times they tell you they're the only one, that more and more will take advantage of this as an opportunity to grow and to learn and to get better before the test really means something when they go to high school.
Barbara, I can also share, um, so you see these numbers here, 38% in eighth grade, 33% in seventh grade. We're down towards 20% this year.
Oh, yay!
So 20, around 20% in eighth, 20% in seventh. Unfortunately, um, when the kids then took math and then the science, they start to get a little traction. And we started to see a li- little more opt-out or refuse math and then more refuse science. I don't know, but I'm, I'm hoping that that changes.
Good.
I, I think uh that reluctance to take these state tests will pass in time. You have to remember, uh, it was a rebellion against what the state did approximately 10 years ago. They loaded up tests at every turn in their infinite wisdom as they sit on their ivory towers. Uh, you know, an- another great.
This isn't helpful.
Snafu by the state of New York's Department of Education. Uh, and the parents rebelled, rightfully so. I don't blame them. But that's dying out. The state has regained their wisdom, I think, and has lessened the amount of exams. They should be school-based, you know, or, or even, I, I love the, the IB. Uh, you know, the International Baccalaureate, you could bring that down. And I know you're doing that, Travis, at that level. We don't have to worry about this nonsense anymore.
Yeah.
Because the kids are gonna be challenged in so many different ways.
And you know, I won't steal Matt's thunder with IB, but I will talk really quickly about it. Um, IB in the middle school, middle years program is IB for all.
Yep, right.
Every student, some parents are still a little bit confused about that, like, only certain kids take it, right? No, every single student in the middle school, it's a framework and you don't see it. It's in every, everything that we do, the language, um, their interdisciplinary units. You don't see the change, but the children will feel the rigor and they will be supported throughout. And I think that's what's so important. And again, we're still in our infancy, but um it is very, very exciting, the work that we've already started to embark upon.
Good, thank you.
I just wanted to say that years ago was also a, a political movement on the face of the parents. And it was, I don't wanna support a test for my child that supports rote memorization. But the lack of understanding, we need that data to look at curriculum where we need to make those adjustments.
Absolutely. And that, those assessments have changed mightily because it's not about memorization. It's, it's about thinking.
That's right.
It's about the process. They, they're really, um, have come a long way.
Sorry, one question regarding iReady testing. With the iReady testing, I remember taking it a couple of years ago. But what is it, and you might have already mentioned this as well, but what is it for? Is it used for placement for like, I remember like with math, cause like around seventh grade, you get separated into like accelerated math versus like standard level math? Is it used for placement testing?
Sure, so that's a great question, Simone. Um, it's a multiple measure for placement, whether it be academic intervention services, um, whether it be um accelerated math, um, whether it be just support in certain areas, giving teachers feedback on areas for growth. So it's not just, we don't just use iReady. We use New York State assessments, we use iReady assessments, we use teacher input. So all those factors kind of create a whole picture of if that child needs intervention services for reading, intervention services for math. Um, we also use that data to advance, place them for math. But as Jackie mentioned, her seventh grade um experience, we don't deny any family or student the ability to advance if they choose to. So if they're not recommended in Math 7A and a family says, hey, I wanna give my child the chance, absolutely. Yeah, we wouldn't deny a child that opportunity. And if they didn't go into 7A in seventh grade and they wanna give Algebra I the opportunity in eighth grade, um, we give them a little support over the summer, like, hey, we've got some work to catch you up on, but sure, give it a try. So there's no denial for advancement, um, because sometimes we don't see all the data and you never know if that child's gonna rise to the occasion, so we appreciate that.
Right, okay, that's great. Um, so how, like, what's your position on the, on having students understand, like, how much does iReady matter? You know, because, you know, even, cause I have like, si- my, my peers, like, they have siblings in seventh and eighth grade and my brother's in eighth grade, so I know, like, they don't wanna do iReady. I remember I didn't wanna do iReady. So my question is, do you, is it like, the position of the staff? Is it like, hey, guys, this is iReady, this is something that's gonna kind of determine, not fully determine, as you mentioned, but like, this kind of has a bit of an influence on like your path for like the next couple of years? Or is it more like, okay, let's casually see what you know in like a less stressful environment?
So we're working on it. So it's something that we're trying to interweave into more of a practice within our classrooms because it's always been more heavy in fifth and sixth grade, um, where they utilize it in their IE classes four days a week because we need to compile that data. This year, we were able to weave it into seventh and eighth grade, but we didn't start till October. And some of those kids, especially our eighth graders, weren't used to that practice. So I think the more we weave this in and the more teachers use the feedback, um, the more the students will see the value in it. And our staff will see um more of the value in it as well. Because what's really nice is it shows everyone what a child needs to work more on and it breaks it down. We're actually bringing consultant in um after the first benchmark in September, so October-ish, um, to work with our staff to break everything down and see areas in which they can integrate it into their instruction, to even see more growth. So again, like I had mentioned earlier, it's not on a transcript, it's not on a report card, but it is something that shows progress over the course of the year. So it is a nice, universal measure.
Simone, just to add to um what Mr. McCarty is saying and answer your question further, it's a balance. We really wanna make sure our students don't feel high anxiety all the time and make everything, you know, like, oh, this is really important, you've gotta do really well on this. But our teachers do emphasize, okay, give this your best, do your best work here. We really wanna know how you're doing, we need to see. Um, but without putting that high, high stress on them because I feel a lot of students already experienced enough stress in just general assessments as well as the state assessments. So given, this, this is given three times a year, we wanna make sure that it's balanced in that approach.
That's a good way to go about it, thank you.
So this is our iReady data um for English Language Arts or reading, um essentially, over the course of this school year. Um, so I know that's a little hard to see up there on the screen, but um we had some wonderful growth, starting in fifth grade. Um, if you, all right, we can look at this slide. Um, so if you look at the beginning of the school year, 35% uh were proficient and that increased to 57%. So it's a 22% growth over the course of the year. Sixth grade started the year at 42% proficient, um, finishing the year at 64%, which was a 22% growth. Uh, seventh grade, uh, started the year at 44% and finished at 54%, so it was a 10% growth. And uh, eighth grade was, started the year at 41% and finished the year at 60%, which was a 19% growth. So on average, about a 20% growth over the school year. Um, you know, I've spoken with um Jackie and others, that transition to seventh grade is not an easy one. The kids go from pods to um content areas with an introduction of foreign language as well. So there is a little bit of less time um in the areas of math and ELA. Um, on average, 10 minutes less a day. Um, but please note that that seventh grade transition year is also a big change physically, socially, emotionally, mentally, so on and so forth. So we're still working in that area, but um we saw growth across the board.
I just wanna note, at the same time, we're seeing increases in the Tier One between the fall and the spring administration, we're also seeing significant decreases in the number of students testing in Tier Three.
Yeah.
So as our highest tier grows, the lowest tier shrinks, which is really the two metrics that we look for.
So our goal here is more green and less red, if that makes sense. And you'll see the, the one that's faded out was the fall. The one that's highlighted above is the spring, which they took in May. So our goal is, again, decrease the red and the yellow, increase the green across the board. So this ju- just shows, this is actually a comparison of the year prior, um, which you'll see all grades um are strong in phonological awareness and high-frequency words. Um, vocabulary and comprehension are areas for improvement as they have been um for some time. Grade eight showed grades, uh, gains across the board in all areas last year to this year. Um, and you can see that if you look at the light blue, that is the year prior. So the way you wanna compare it is, if you look at grade five and then you look at this year's grade six, which is the dark blue, there's a slight increase as you go across. But you'll see, that's a strong cohort, right? Um, if you look at grade seven and you look at the light blue and then you see where they finished this year, the dark blue, look at that increase. So you wanna look at the prior year's light blue and then the next year's dark blue and you'll see um how that increases. That's the best way that I can explain it. So we are showing growth and when you compare cohorts, especially the changes we're trying to bring about in seventh and eighth grade, we certainly see the change.
So at six to seven, we saw a decrease.
Yes, yep. So you'll see that light blue and that slight decrease to the dark blue. And again, there's a number of factors in seventh grade, we're, we're working on that. Um, so this is our math data. Um, fifth grade ranked third um in the Putnam Northern Westchester region. And this, this looks a little bit different, um, but I will explain it the best that I can. Maybe I'll skip ahead a little bit here. This is all, this shows where we ranked um compared to other districts around the area. And that is uh... Math Five, you'll see on the left-hand side, and that's Math Six on the right-hand side. So when you compare us to regionally, that's where we ranked, which is, as you can see, is very strong as compared to some of those, the names of some of those other districts. But this is the slide that I wanted to show you. So when you look at fifth grade, they were at 29% to start the year and finished the year at 71%. So we see a 42% gain just from the start to the end of the school year in math for iReady. Sixth grade started the year at 39%, finished the year at 76%, so a 32% gain. Seventh grade started at 27% and finished at 46%, I'm sorry, 44%, which was a 17% gain. And eighth grade, 35%, finished at 56% with a 21% gain. So interestingly enough, the most gain we actually see in math is in fifth, followed by sixth, then eighth, and then seventh. So our pods, our pod formula in fifth and sixth grade and the time dedicated and the programs that they're using has shown substantial gains. When we then go to the discipline model, technically, that, that rotation from class to class and five different teachers, introduction to foreign language, a little bit less time in the areas of math and ELA. It's transition, right? It's a transition in seventh grade. And then we, we start to see even more gains again back in eighth grade. So we're getting there. As Simone mentioned, with iReady, it's a culture shift, right? Trying to help students to understand that this is a tool that helps them identify areas that they need to grow. And by giving them that iReady instruction, we do it on Mondays and Fridays, we're rethinking the days of the week next year. Because Mondays and Fridays aren't always the best days of the week. So maybe we're going to do Tuesdays and Wednesdays. And really have our IE teachers a little more involved because these aren't their typical classroom teachers where these kids are taking this instruction. But we're always looking for ways to improve.
Yeah. Travis, the iReady aligns to what they're doing in class? Or it aligns to the New York State curriculum? Like, what is it aligned, aligned to? Like, if I'm taking an iReady test, does it reflect what I'm doing in class at all or what I will be doing in class?
So it aligns to the New York State standards. It doesn't, like, it doesn't look exactly what they're doing in class, but they are skills that are touched upon throughout the year. And actually, we have kids who have tested out, so they might be on a ninth grade level. So they're above grade level. So that, it challenges them to go further. And those that are below grade level, it gives them just enough to try to stretch them up.
So I can give you a 30-second rundown of what iReady is. So iReady is an online diagnostic or adaptive assessment, which means it'll pick standards, questions that assess certain standards at grade levels. And as you get them right, it'll continue to move through that grade level. So you may start with fourth grade questions as a review. It'll take you through questions in the fourth grade curriculum. As long as you keep getting them right, it'll bring you up to fifth grade. It'll bring you through fifth grade. If you start getting them wrong in a sequence, it's like, all right, we've reached the top of your learning. If you keep doing well, some students test out of their current grade and into the next grade. And then you always run into like a third grader who gets every math question right. It's like, what the heck is a protractor? Like, I don't know how to start, because they're now on fourth or fifth grade curriculum. And they finally get to a point where they're like, I don't even know how to start answering this question. So that's the way the assessment works. So it, it looks at specific standards based upon grade levels, asks you questions to assess your understanding of those standards, and then continues to adapt. You get a couple wrong, it'll bring you back down. You get a couple right, it'll bring you back up. And it moves back and forth in that capacity until its algorithm says, okay, this student is tested out. This is an accurate level of where they are.
Very impressive, Dr. Love. In, in actuality-
He's been doing his homework.
In actuality, New York State has talked a little bit about going to an adaptive assessment in the future, which would be very interesting because their assessments are going fully to computer-based very soon. So it might make sense to do something like that. So we'll see. So here's, here's another example of that change. So again, if you look at the light blue and then you look at the dark blue, you'll see that change from fifth grade last year to a slight grain, gain to sixth grade this year. You see in grade six, the light blue last year to then the dark blue this year. But then you see the light blue in seventh grade to the dark blue in eighth grade. Now, something we should all keep in mind with regard to math is we have two cohorts of Algebra I students who always seem to be not included, but separated from the pack. With iReady, they're actually included with the pack. So when you look at New York State testing data and you see the percentages, we have to keep in mind that doesn't include our Algebra I students. However, this data does. So that actually helps our numbers. But we are reviewing this data with our teachers and we're always looking, again, for ways to improve programmatically and with our style of instruction. So that transition from sixth to seventh is something we'll continue to look at and investigate.
So I just want to talk a little bit about our next steps piece here because we are looking at an aligned curriculum 5.8. We see so much success with our Eureka program, grades three through six, as you can see in our data. And then Eureka stops in the seventh grade. So there's a lot of things that are out of our control. The academic maturity of students in seventh grade, the transitions they go through, unless we want to go to a pod model in seventh grade, which I don't think we're adopting at this point. So there's a lot of things out of our control. What is within our control is our instructional, our pedagogy and the materials we use. And so the materials is something that we are going to examine. We're forming a K8 math committee to look at programs similar to the model we use to adopt Scholastic in the elementary school, where we're going to look at different programs that are out there with a focus on Eureka and its new Eureka squared, they call it. It's just the next iteration of Eureka, to see what is going to make the most sense, either 5.8 or K8. If the elementary school through this process decides to stay with Eureka, they're having a lot of success with it. I wouldn't have a problem with elementary doing Eureka and Eureka squared. But we're going to have the teachers and the administrators sitting together at the table, looking at materials, looking at our standards, and thinking about what makes the most sense, K8. So I really want to see our seventh and eighth grade doing a model that makes sense to keep the, to continue the success we're having in our fourth, third, fourth, fifth, and sixth grades.
Does the NYPD program, the middle years program, change the kind of math that you're going to be doing or?
No, it does not. NYPD is a framework. So essentially, we're still going to teach the same standards. We use our materials and build our materials and our work into the units we create, thinking with the NYPD concepts, right? What is our global concepts, our key concepts, global context key concepts? Those are the things. What's our statement of inquiry? And we don't have to have every unit in the year be an NYPD unit, but we do have to have at least one unit, especially for authorization. So this is, NYPD is a process. So we, I feel very comfortable adopting something material-wise for our curriculum. Because again, curriculum, sometimes people mix up curriculum and materials. Curriculum is what you're teaching. Materials is how you get there, right? So what we're using to teach the curriculum is not, is different. And we can still adopt the NYPD framework for our units and use Eureka program or something else.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just real quick, I know Barbara, or somebody, Jeanette maybe, mentioned earlier about our Algebra I data in the fall. So we do have two cohorts that just took their exams today. And I know historically, the numbers from our eighth graders in the middle school have been tremendous. And we have a great success rate with that. So look forward to presenting that data. Teachers do a fine job with that. Thank you.
You know, Travis, what, what's heartening is that even though, you know, we're, we're a little concerned about that seventh grade, they do seem to rebound very well by the time they're in eighth grade. And I have to agree with you, having been in a middle school for as long as I was before being, you know, over to the high school, that seventh grade, oh, man, God bless you. That's all I can say. That's a tough grade.
It is a transitionally year.
It's very challenging. And the, the fact that they mature like magic by the time they're eighth graders. It's really an amazing phenomenon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. McCarty. And now I would like to welcome Dr. Margaret Podesta. We will be moving into our elementary school data. Once again, we're going to focus on our New York State data and our iReady assessments. But other assessments we use at the elementary school are DRA, foundations. We have math benchmarks and we also have our new NSGRA assessments that come with the Scholastic program that we have adopted this year. So while we're in a learning phase of those NSGRA assessments, we felt it wasn't, it wasn't a good idea to include them here because how people deliver them varied as they're learning how to deliver them. So we're not going to use them this year, but probably next year, we'll start using those NSGRI data assessments into this type of a presentation. So let's move right into here.
Go ahead, Dr. Podesta.
Good evening, everyone. So we'll begin by just giving you a little bit of a quick background, if you don't mind. So I am, believe it or not, finishing my 10th year here as the principal of Putnam Valley Elementary. And thank you, Mr. Ferraro. You are on the interview committee along with some nice ladies in the audience here. In that 10 years, we have, from the very first day, when I met my new superintendent, we have been working and looking at curriculum, standards, resources, and instructional practices. So that is not me alone by any means. It's been the support of our administration. It's been our colleagues with other administrators, and it's truly been the teachers in this building who have taken all professional development available. We've been given resources with PD through the years. And we've been looking at resources and curriculum as study teams. And that is what has happened through the years. And these PV kids, they're amazing. You give them the instruction and the current resources and, and the engaging learning activities, and they just continue to blow you away. So that's what's been happening at the elementary school. So we'll start off with the big highlight here. Both our third and fourth grade classes last year in 2022 were number one in the entire Putnam Northern Westchester region for mathematics. Thank you. That's not where we were 10 years ago, right? Like, this has taken a lot of studying and a lot of, like, really looking at the, the standards and what the state expects and what good learning looks like. So as we talk about Eureka, that came about with a year-long study team. It came about looking at what we were expected to teach and how to teach it and what does true number sense and problem solving and mathematical strategies and thinking look like. So we found through our studies and our research that Eureka met our needs. And we were hoping that we had chosen something that would meet our students' needs, and sure enough, it continues to. Our children have a very deep understanding of number sense. If you walk in any room, you will hear talk of tape diagrams and number bonds and counting the arrow way and estimation, like I wish I had learned as a young child, what does estimation look like? And how do these numbers work together? They use problem-solving practices carried from year to year. So they know how to read, draw, write, and then they know how to write a problem statement. And they know how to dissect word problems that can be related to real life. So when we look at our third and fourth grades here, they continue to show us, we're meeting their needs as learners. We're definitely meeting the desires of the state with what we want to prepare our students with. And so for grade three here, and I'll just take a very close look, we don't have the opt-out situation in elementary school. And if we do get an opt-out call, I do like to call the parent or the teacher does and just say, you know, what's going on? And it's a good practice to at least take the test. They're doing more in a regular day of school. So that starts to hit a little more with the peer pressure as the children age, I believe. But you can see right here, proficient and above 88% in grade three and 77% in grade four. So we do have a very strong cohort. Both cohorts are extremely strong. But the cohort currently in grade four is just a small but mighty cohort. And I can't wait to see how they move forward as a group. So we're very proud of that as we compare to the state, as we compare to the district. You know, we're, we're looking really good and feeling good about the children moving forward into middle school. So here we are, just to take a close look at the districts, you know, you see us at the top of the list there, right, in both, both sections? That's, that's just something, the balloons came in. We celebrated. But some very-
That's number two? Is that Chapala is number two?
I think, you know, we should, we should be very proud here, right? These are very high-achieving districts. Putnam Valley is a very high-achieving district. And so I say to my colleagues here, I'm so excited about the students as I think about the seniors who, who can't, who were in second grade 10 years ago, you know? So it's been a road and a journey, and we continue to get better and better. It's a district that continues to get better and better. And as the cohorts move forward, they are definitely strong and ready for you. Ready for your next pods and IB and everything you have for them. So, so we can just stare at this slide for a few minutes if you'd like. All right. But thank you to my teachers who are just amazing. Okay, so then we give iReady in grades two through four in the elementary school. And again, what you see here, so you don't see anything for first grade, but they take their other assessments, of course. But we have grades two through four taking these computer-based testing. And we compare fall, where the green is smaller as they come into us at the beginning of the year. And it grows dramatically as the year goes on into the spring. So these are very recent scores where in every grade, this is math right here. You can see the huge growth of the green and the decline of the red as we go through the year. And then just to look at percentages again, and Jackie, it's just, you know, we can see it. Grade two went from 8.9% in Tier One to 56% in the spring. Look at that. Grade three, we're going from 14.6% to 73% in third grade. And fourth grade, 30.7% to 84.2% in spring. There is so much teaching and learning going on and lots of strong data. Go ahead.
This is last year's data, correct?
No, this is-
This is iReady.
And I just want to add, when we think about these students in particular, these students faced the greatest impact from COVID. These were in their formative education years, their earliest academic years, which we know are critical. These are the students we're talking about, these second graders, they were in kindergarten, right, when everything happened. And our third graders, first grade, our fourth graders. So when we look at these students and what they're achieving right now and think about what was done during that time period, the schooling that was lost and the time that was lost in classes and the, you know, the chaos of quarantining and pulling them in and out of classes. This is incredible data when you think about what these students went through in their earliest years.
Well, that being said, they were, we, we had the benefit of the elementary school being fully open. You know, we had the space we spread, you know, so that, that's, that says something.
Yes, it does. I was actually most worried about the current cohort in third grade through COVID just because it was time to learn to read and they were sent home for most of the spring. But they are, they're doing really well.
You bucked the tide. I mean, for sure. You look at the stats that every department of that has come out with, especially some of our neighbors to the west of us. Their, their reading skills were devastated during COVID. And yet we, we stand proud here. And that, that's a real compliment to, to our district and to your leadership.
Thank you.
Margaret, I mean that.
Thank you.
Outstanding.
Well, and Jeremy's counting kids and trying to find rooms where they all fit.
That's the other part.
Wait, wait, I think we can get them all in school five days.
Dr. Love persevered and wanted them in school, really.
The maps on the whiteboard of, of classrooms and where can we put kids?
Yeah, yeah.
The secret was giving Dave a meter stick that we told him was six feet long, but it was really just like five and a half.
So here we have this year's math iReady data with a, a type of bar graph you saw with Travis. So in grade three, you are seeing significant gains made in this grade in the area of mathematics from 59% on or above grade level all the way to 77%, 77% on or above grade level here. We do see, and there's always room for growth and there's always room for improvement, geometry and data and measurement are areas for deeper examination. And we will continue to work with our classroom teachers, our math support person, and just take a look at our AIS and the needs that are being met there. And then we're going to leverage AIS math for support and supplemental materials in these areas. Yes, go ahead.
So this goes back a little bit to what we were saying earlier about those foundational skills, right? So, and there's a lot of reasons this could be. Maybe geometry is an area that comes up later in Eureka's programming in the school year. So it's maybe not touched on upon as deeply, or maybe the material itself doesn't go as deep. And so, you know, we have to really examine our program, our data deeply to understand why these gaps exist, where it happens, and what we can do about them so that we build a stronger foundation for our students as they move up through the grades and get to high school where they have that even more challenging math. What pieces are we missing early and how do we continue to elevate that work? So our number sense is clearly very strong and we're doing great there, number sense and operations. But what can we do about geometry and measurement and statistics to be able to elevate our students?
And so just to take a close look here, if you look at second graders who are taking online tests for the first time when they take iReady, they haven't done this before. They do have little learning programs, but this is their first exam. You can see grade two, light blue last year, right? That group go to the dark blue for grade three and look at that huge increase. The light blue in grade three is last year, look at them in grade four. So, you know, great progress and significant increase. Okay, so here we have our ELA again, lots to celebrate here and lots to look at very closely. In grade three, 79% of our students were proficient in last year's New York State ELA test. And last year in grade four, 70% proficient. Those are high numbers of proficiency. So looking at that on the bar graph at the top compared to the district, you know, they're very high compared to the state, extremely high. So we have done a lot of work, as you know, with ELA in recent years. Particularly this year, we are in the first year of our new Scholastic literacy program. We are looking at that very closely all the time and especially this coming summer as we look at assessments and how we're comparing our DRA that we've used in recent years compared to our NSGRA, Next Steps in Guided Reading Assessment that the children take now with Scholastic. We also have our foundations data, we have our iReady data, and we have teachers who really want to know how does this translate to report card and information for parents? So that is the work that we want to even get better at. We also have the Scholastic literacy program that is a heavy emphasis on guided reading, teaching students to read, not just teaching a book. And we have children who are growing in their foundations, which is phonics, word study. So when you read the articles in the New York Times about the science of reading and the importance of phonics and word study, we're already there. And I'm thankful that we are. We've been doing very close work with Fidelity, the foundations work for years, K through three. And we've had a consultant come in all year to work with one of our teachers in first grade who will be a foundations trainer in our building. And so that focus with what the science of reading is talking about was not on the wayside for us. It's been a focus. And the fact that teachers hand in data every quarter of the school year and we look closely at that data and we talk about that data in RTI meetings to see what reading gaps might exist for a student and where they're excelling, that is something that we're going to continue to grow with. We've come a long way, particularly this year. But we're excited about the fact that we have such a strong foundation with what we do with our literacy program.
And can I, can I just add that I know this is a data presentation and data is really important. We asked for this. But when I've been in classes, either because I was there as a guest reader or because I was invited to come into a class to a writing celebration or like Ms. Yetter and I were doing a sustainability fair project today with a book that they had read.
Thank you.
It's not just testing and evaluation. They are excited about what they've read, they're excited to talk about it. They, they have lots of opinions. There, there's an enthusiasm and excitement that, that data doesn't show. I mean, we're looking at a lot of data and that, and it's, this is an important thing. But I don't want the impression that we are data-driven to the point where like, they're like Simone's brother, it's like, oh, my God, I don't want to do another test. So I just, I just want to say that I don't see that at all in the students themselves.
No, and one of the major reasons why our staff, together, we chose the Scholastic literacy program is because it's authentic literature each and every day. These books are gorgeous. You've all been in the book room. I mean, these children are holding the most beautiful books every single day, fiction and nonfiction. And I will tell you that our primary teachers, one and two, grades one and two, they can't believe the level of engagement and comprehension that their students are demonstrating just in classroom conversations, partner talk. So that's all true and the love of reading exists. Yeah, so thank you. Okay, so ELA growth for iReady this year, grades two through four again. You can see these really nice growths in second, third, and fourth with the green growing from the fall all, all the way to the spring. And yet we're still looking at, okay, where can we do better? Do we need more vocabulary? Do we need deeper comprehension? Do we need phonemic awareness? So, so we're looking at all of the parts where we can continue to improve and have the red shrink even more and the green grow. And here we have the, the fall and spring changes here. Grade two, in the fall of this year, they proficient at 19% and grade two is at a very proud 72.7%. That's a big jump there. Grade three, they started at 51.5%, which was a nice start and up to 72% in the fall. Sorry, spring. And then fourth grade, tier one, 26.3% up to 74%. So lots of reading and writing in the elementary school. PVS ELA iReady data, you can see grade three, this year's cohort demonstrated a 10% increase in improvement largely in phonological awareness and phonics category. And you can see that that is extremely important to young readers. They need to know how words work, how letters work, how to decode and encode. All grades, we're going to continue to focus on comprehension and vocabulary. And we're going to be using our summer work to really look at even areas of Scholastic that we know we need to improve upon for ourselves and for the students in front of us. Any questions right now or, or are we good?
We're good.
We're good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Podesta. And once again, I want to thank all of the principals for their support and help in putting this presentation together. This is our last data slide for the evening. I felt it was very important to include our NISlat data. This relates directly to our ENL students. And I just want to explain that not all of our students who are ENL students are featured here because we don't test them the first year that they're here. They are not required to be tested by the NISlat. So we actually have about over 90 ENL students in the district, but this actually doesn't represent all of those students at all. So one of the reasons this slide is important is because when you think about that, if you look at this chart down below, that chart just explains what type of instruction is needed, how much instruction, how many units of instruction are needed depending on where the student falls, if they're entering, emerging, transitioning, expanding, or commanding. The goal is for all students to be commanding and move out of the ENL services. But we do have a majority of our students falling in the expanding area, which is a really great sign. And again, this is the majority of students who were tested. What I will say is, as we think about those students that are not yet tested because of their newness to the district, that impacts our staffing in the ENL department. So when we talk about whether or not we need additional ENL teachers and additional ENL services, that is why, because we have a growing population that we don't necessarily have all of the data for, but they are largely entering and emerging. And the work our teachers do with them from the time they enter our school to the time they actually are tested by the NISlat speaks to this expanding majority of students that we have because we have such terrific, such a terrific ENL department that works so hard on supporting our students as well as their classroom teachers who support them as well. Questions?
Thank you, Jane.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
I think we asked them along the way.
Really? And kudos to our administrative staff from the elementary right up to the high school doing a bang-up job.
We have very, very dedicated administrators and teachers who work very hard to produce these amazing results.
Thank you all for having this job. Thank you.
Actually, before we do, we do student reports, I was wondering if we could go to new business and just do the first item of new business. Is that okay?
Yeah, sure. I think that's great.
We made her way, way through all the data.
I thought it was important for you to see the presentation.
The data, yeah.
People holding on the table here, one's like, let's do it before. It's like, no, no, she has to see it.
Anyway, so, okay?
Go ahead.
All right, Joe, you're up. Item one, please.
Resolving recommendations superintendent schools to appoint Carly Robey as an elementary school assistant principal in the tenure area of elementary school assistant principal to serve a four-year probationary appointment effective August 1st, 2023 through July 31st, 2027. At the annual salary $135,000, Ms. Robey holds the following New York State certifications: School District Leader and School Building Leader Initial Certifications and Childhood Education 1 through 6, Literary 8 through 6, and Students Disability 1 through 6 Professional Certifications.
Second.
Questions or comments?
So Ms. Robey is here with us this evening, joined by her husband. I just want to say a few words about her. So she emerged from a really strong candidate pool, nearly 170 applicants for elementary school assistant principal. Sounds pretty impressive, even all those numbers, right? So 170 candidates, I know over 20 candidates were screened. Four candidates went forward in our really formal and rigorous committee and, and presentation process. And Carly impressed throughout the process. And in our debrief afterwards with all of the volunteers who participated, it was very clear that she was the one that had emerged to the top and would best serve our needs here in Putnam Valley, specifically at the elementary school. So while she grew up locally and graduated from Somers, we promise not to hold that against her. That's better than Mayapac. But she's begun her teaching career and started her family out in Long Island in Wantagh. And, but she's eager to move back up to the Somers area where her parents still reside and is very eager to start her work. We've arranged for a transition period between her and Ms. Pico. And again, Ms. Pico, who we will sorely miss and wish her only the best as she returns to the classroom. But I wholeheartedly recommend the board appoint Ms. Robey this evening. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Please come up. Margaret, did you explain she has to give a speech? You didn't tell her that part?
Yeah, Barbara, when you said, we said that to Margaret, she went up.
I know.
This is true.
Anyway, welcome. It is truly a family and we're glad you're joining us.
Well, I'm sure you were very impressed by the data presentation. You definitely owe your husband a dinner and a drink after making him sit through an hour and 15 minutes of elementary school, middle school, and high school data. So thank you all for coming. Ms. Martin, you as well.
Okay, we're going to go back to the student representatives' report.
Hello, everyone. We have a lot of stuff going on at the high school. We had promised Wednesday, no incidents, thank God, no rain, even though we're getting the rain tomorrow instead. But yeah, we had prom, it was really great. Senior week activities were well-attended, so I'd say most of us are walking at graduation, thank God. Laptops are all mostly turned in. The list is dwindling down to the ones that are due. Science research students, they're upstate right now with Mr. Zupan, three or four of them, I believe, competing at Genius Olympiad, which is a great, that's a like big-time competition for them to be at. So props to them. They'll be there, they've been there since earlier this week. And so now they're done as of today with like their judging and stuff like that. So they kind of get to enjoy their time a little bit now, get a breather. So yes, congratulations to them. We had our senior student awards last Thursday. And I feel like we had a really well-represented group of kids that were awarded with stuff. And I'm really glad to see that because it's so, it's like, it's nice to see people that we don't get to recognize super often be recognized. And a lot of things, like, I didn't know certain people were involved in certain areas and different activities. So it was really nice to see just a different group of people that aren't usually represented be awarded and given their props. We had our athletic awards this past Monday. We honored the state-level sectional and regional athletes. We had a Hall of Fame inductee and we honored the 2005 state championship, state champion field hockey team. Also, oh, I wanted to give some props to Sierra Gero, who happens to be my sister, but she runs the Putnam Valley Athletics pages and they're like on Twitter and Instagram. And I feel like our students really appreciate that platform just because they don't have to search. I love LowHud, don't get me wrong, I love LowHud. But we don't have to search through LowHud every night trying to find her stats anymore. So I'm really glad and I will say on behalf of the students, thank you to her for that. And hopefully looking forward to seeing her come back and running that athletics page next year. But I want to give her some props briefly. We had eighth grade orientation, I think, two nights ago, I think. And that was kind of coordinated and I think they worked with some of the big, the incoming seniors that are part of the Big Buddy program, I believe. So they toured around some of the students and I think that the incoming freshmen really benefited from that. And then speaking of transitions, graduation is tomorrow. So I think a lot of us are really excited about that. It's going to be bittersweet, but we've worked really hard and I'm glad that we made it to this point.
Outstanding.
Congratulations. Well, I had, I had gifts and cards for you, but they're at home. So I will give them to you tomorrow to the three. Emily's not here tonight or Christian, but we really so appreciate student voice and, and your questions and comments and concerns. You know, take our discussion to another level because as much as you try as an adult to understand what's going on with students, we're removed from that. So the fact that you three are part of that world and can bring that perspective really matters a lot to the board. And so I know you guys have been working on replacements for next year. Is that going well?
Yeah, I think we have them. I'm not, I can't remember off the top of my head, but we have them. And they're in a note somewhere with Mr. Scampoli. We do have them.
Good, good. We'll be anxious to meet them and we'll welcome them. So tell them we're really not mean and crabby. Even though sometimes you have to sit through a long presentation. Okay, thank you so much.
I want to say something real quick with Simone. When, so with athletic awards on Monday, when you won all the, a lot of the awards. And then the last week's senior awards, when you won a multitude, well-deserved. Then you won the Girl Scouts Gold Award and with describing that, Barbara turns to me and says, does she sleep?
No, I haven't slept since ninth grade.
You forgot the part where she runs her own business.
Yeah.
As a high school senior.
Yep, so congratulations.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you, I appreciate it.
All right, after that report, I want to say ditto.
Nothing left to say.
So mine'll be really quick. I do want to start by thanking Joe Farrar for all he's done for this district. He is now currently one of the two remaining board members who originally hired me for this position, which is gonna leave Barbara as the sole survivor beginning next year.
Happily responsible.
So you are destined to stay for as long as possible. But I truly think, I want to echo many of the things I've already shared, I think you've always been a champion for students, a champion for public education, and has, have made tremendous impact on the students and the community here. And as I had told you, right after the election, that your legacy here will certainly continue for many, many years moving forward. So I did want to say thank you for all you've done, not just for myself, but obviously for the students, staff, and the community here in Putnam Valley. Thank you. I did want to also acknowledge Simone, Emily, and Christian as well. I know it's not an easy task. I have the opportunity to meet you before it starts, and I try to convince you it's not as terrifying as it looks. I was really impressed, especially with you, Simone, your willingness to get involved in dialogue, to provide a viewpoint, that's, that's really what the goal of this is, and really the purpose to have students on. The report piece is, is good, but obviously we want students that are gonna engage in board discussions, and I thought you were fabulous throughout the school year, along with Emily and Christian, in, in terms of engaging the board and providing a student perspective. So I hope that whoever fills your seat continues to do the same. I'm not sure they could win as many awards and accolades as you did, but we'll, we'll see how that works out. I did want to acknowledge, CSCA successfully ratified their successor agreement contract last evening, so that's great news. And I know that the PVFT presented their contract this evening, they have a voting window, so by Tuesday, I think their votes will be cast, and I'm optimistic their contract will also be ratified moving forward, which would be a great way to spend our summer, and a, a very peaceful way of opening our school year. Some of the science research accolades, I'll skip the ones that Simone already spoke about, but we also had a sophomore science fair for over 630 students competing. Putnam Valley sent 22 students, and 13 of them received medals. Only the top 20 percentage category received medals. So for an example, in the behavior category, 240 competitors entered, and only 44 students were awarded either first, second, or third prize. So a tremendous accomplishment for our students. We had two first place, five second place, and six third-place finishes across behavior, bioinformatics, I don't know what that is, chemistry, medicine and health, animal science, engineering, computer science, and environmental science. Just a quick graduation update. So as everyone is aware, the graduation ceremony was scheduled for, is scheduled for tomorrow evening at 7:00 PM. We do have a rain date for Saturday. We quickly realized with the forecast, the rain date looks rainier than the current date, so we're gonna move forward with the plan for 7:00 PM tomorrow, rain or shine, and it's obviously looking like rain, and not so much shine. So if that's the case, our graduation ceremony will be held in the high school, in the PAC. We'll have sort of overflow seating available here in the cafeteria if it's necessary, but I know that Mr. Mello and Dr. Payne and Mr. Spittle have already mapped out, I think, chairs all set up and make sure that everyone's gonna fit, so that's probably the most comfortable, the most climate-controlled space that we have, has to make sure that everyone is comfortable, and we have seats available. So unless a miracle happens and the sun appears tomorrow evening, that looks like that'll be the plan, 7:00 PM here at the high school. A quick reminder, our calendar changes, so the elementary school is now scheduled to have half-days next week, Thursday and Friday. It's kind of crazy, it's already next week. And the middle school will have a half-day for students next Friday. Schools are closed next Monday in honor of the Juneteenth holiday. We held our first capital projects facilities committee, so this is very similar to a process we used back in 2017, I believe it was the last time we had a facilities planning committee. We started off with a very strong crowd, I think nearly 50 community members showed up, just to hear sort of an overview of the process, and really an outline of the different opportunities they'll have. Our next meeting is scheduled for June 22nd, which is, I would just say, Thursday, and that'll be at the elementary school, it'll begin with a tour of the elementary school facilities, both indoors and outdoor facilities, hopefully, and then a meeting that'll follow up from there. And then the following week, on June 28th, we have our middle school tour scheduled. So that's up-and-coming events. Just a recognition of some of the many things that have been held. Elementary school held their field day, and all this week have been holding their sustainability fair. So kudos to Ms. Bruno and Ms. Bros for putting together the sustainability fair, and obviously all the teachers, and especially physical education staff involved in the field day setup. Middle school concert, both our underclassmen and senior awards have taken place. On Monday, I know we had spoke about, it was really a truly impressive athletics awards and first-ever Hall of Fame induction. Huge kudos to Dave Kantowitz for organizing that all and putting it together. The PAC was packed, both with current students, former students, and obviously the recognition of Tommy Hirsch. Fantastic evening. We've already come up with ways to shave at least 45 minutes off it next year. Upcoming events, our fourth grade is scheduled to have the Revolutionary War reenactment, weather pending. High school graduation, we spoke about, and our elementary and middle school moving up ceremonies are scheduled for June 21st. Then, just looking forward, so this is almost a future topics, but I'm gonna throw it in there right now. The district has been provoked, provoked, has been approached by a provider exploring the possibilities of installing a cellphone tower. Now, and this is in no way meant to be, I am proposing, we say yes to installation of the cellphone tower, but there's obviously financial repercussions for the district, and it's a potential revenue source, and I think it's, we, it's worth at least hearing what the proposal would be, considering the likelihood, if we say no, they're just gonna put it 50 feet on the other side of our property, and we're gonna get no revenue for it. So if the interest continues throughout the summer, I made it very clear that this conversation can only happen in an open board meeting, that we would notify the community, we'd provide a forum for anyone to provide any information. Ultimately, the board would have to vote on whether or not this is something that we would like to move forward with, but I'm getting way ahead of myself. This has been a proposal, we've been approached, there's a bunch of information they're gonna get us throughout the summer, including computer-generated renderings as to what it would look like in the tree line, how visible it would be, a ton of health information, what the, the projected sort of exposures and, and health pieces that are there. And then that would culminate in a presentation provided by this company to the Board of Education and Community sometime in September, and that would obviously all be communicated with the community well in advance. So nothing more than an FYI at this point. It's out there, it's an opportunity for revenue, there's a real likelihood, if we say no, we're still gonna be staring at the pole, except for it'll be surrounded by solar panels rather than trees, so I thought it was at least worth bringing to the board's attention, and we'll see where that goes. And that's it. Thank you.
Dr. Luft, when will the definitive decision be made on the graduation location?
Well, it's definitely gonna be tomorrow at 7:00.
Right, I know that.
And between you and I, it's definitely gonna be indoors.
Okay.
Just don't tell anyone else. Just in case the sun pops out, I don't want to be called a liar.
Nobody else is watching.
There's a 99% chance of rain all day tomorrow?
Yes.
So that tells me it's gonna be inside.
Are you gonna talk about Megan Boyle?
Oh. How about I start and you can finish?
Okay.
So one of our very own, I know we sent a bunch of communications out, Megan Boyle was recognized with the Better Beginnings Award by the New York State Board of Regents. Herself, Dr. Doherty, Dr. Podesta, Ms. Parmley, and Mr. Cohen had the opportunity to go up and attend the Board of Education, the Board of Regents meeting, and to be there for the recognition, it was a huge accomplishment. It's a really, that sort of, Dr. Wills keeps telling me, a crown jewel for Putnam Valley, to have a Putnam Valley teacher recognized with this very prestigious award. So I'll turn it over to Barb Brooks, I know you were there, if you could share some information.
I was, I've known Megan since kindergarten, she and my daughter are, are in the same class. It's Megan Kinsley, if you don't know her as Boyle. She's homegrown, Putnam Valley, kid, family lives in Putnam Valley. Two of her sisters were on the 2005 field hockey team that was awarded the other night. So we, we went up to Albany, they, they gave three awards that day, two to students who were BOSI's graduates, you would have been real pleased, Sam. One is going to be, studying to be an airline pilot, and I forget what the other one was doing. But this is the last time that the Regents is going to give this award, this Better Beginnings Award, because the financing has run out. But the letters from the parents about how Megan has affected their children and their family, and made such a huge difference just by being who she is, was absolutely amazing, and touching and moving, and it was absolutely great. So we're, you know, really proud of, of Ms. Boyle, and of the work she does. There are so many of our teachers who do many of the things that they mentioned that Megan does, that do not receive recognition, but it's nice when we can take time to recognize how important caring and hard work and trying affects families. And it was, it was, it's just really great, so. And Dr. Wills was so proud. She really was. She insisted on being in every picture, you know, but, you know, because she knew Megan also. Guy Cohen went up, Guy was on the board when Megan was a kindergartner, gave her her diploma at graduation, crossing the stage at, at the county center, because she, that was the last class that went to Panus for high school. Was on the board when she was hired as an aide and then as a teacher, so he's been part of her life, and his wife, Jerry Cohen, coached her in field hockey and taught her math. So, you know, it was really kind of like a family affair, so it was nice, so. We're on to new business. So number?
Two.
Two.
Resolved on the recommendation of superintendent schools to appoint Ramona Portalecci to a probationary appointment as a school monitor effective September 1st, 2023, the probationary period of 52 weeks, August 31st, 2024, at the middle school on step one of the CSCA salary schedule.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number three, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Sarah Roberts to a four-year probationary term as a speech therapist commencing on September 1st, 2023, and terminating on August 31st, 2027, in the tenure area of speech at the elementary school in step 11 MA of the PVFT salary schedule. Ms. Roberts holds speech and language disabilities professional certification. In order to be eligible for appointment to tenure, said employee must receive at least three APPR ratings of effective or highly effective during the four-year probationary term, may not receive an ineffective rating in the final year of probation.
Second. Questions or comments?
I just want to note that Ms. Roberts has been an employee of the district for many years as a part-time speech-language pathologist, so that reflects what step she's being hired at, because she's been here for 10 years, or nearly 10 years, as a part-time speech-language pathologist, so I thought that was a good note for the public.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number four, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of school monitor Amber Keeler from the district effective June 16th of 2023, as per document 213 over 23 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number five, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of middle school teacher Megan Cassidy from the district effective June 23rd, 2023, as per document number 214 dash 23 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number six, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of clean air groundskeeper Justin Jamison from the district effective June 15th, 2023, as per document number 215 slash 23 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number six, please?
Seven.
Nope, seven. Sorry.
Yep. Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of middle school guidance counselor Kendall McKenna from the district effective July 7th, 2023, as per document 217 slash 23 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number eight, please.
Whereas the negotiators for the district and the CSCA sign a memorandum of agreement dated June 15th of 2023 for the terms of a four-year agreement effective July 1st of 2023 through June 30th of 2027, as presented to the Board of Education at this meeting, document number 221 over 23, whereas the law, the Board of Education is required to vote to approve these monies necessary to fund the provisions of said agreement. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the board hereby ratifies the terms of the 2023 to 2027 collective bargaining agreement between the CSCA and the district.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number nine, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to enter into a term of instruction contract with the Garrison Union Free School District for a period of five years commencing July 1st, 2023, and expiring June 30th, 2028, as per document number 219 dash 23 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments?
So our original contract with Garrison was for the single school year, they needed voter approval to enter into a multi-year contract, so by virtue of passing their budget, they received their multi-year, they received the ability to offer a multi-year contract to Putnam Valley. So it's the same terms as our one-year contract, with an escalation percentage increase each of the subsequent years, but otherwise, the terms are exactly the same, but now it's a five-year contract.
Excellent.
Okay.
It's a far cry from the, the non-merging attitude that Garrison and Hal Dean used to have not too long ago about, "Stay away from us, you Putnam Valley people." This is, this is a really good thing.
Yeah, it is. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. So now we're gonna move into public comment on any topic. Come on, Val, you don't want to say something?
There it is.
We haven't heard from you in so long. We've missed you.
Hi, I'm Valerie Fitzgerald. I was a former board member back in, oh my gosh, it was 2008 to 2014. I had the pleasure of sitting with Joe, and you were gonna be a big loss to this district. I think it's your integrity, the hard work you put in, the research you do, you're always honest and forthright, you know where you're coming from. I think that you have done so much for these kids, and your long-term on here, it should be celebrated. be celebrated. You will certainly be missed. And even though you may not see me, I'm always on watching you guys, so.
You're the one.
And keeping up on what's going on in the background, but you will be missed, and you are a wonderful asset to this district. Thank you for your service.
Thanks.
Thanks, Val. Anybody else? Okay, where are we? Upcoming meetings.
So our next meeting is scheduled for June 27th. It's our board retreat. But we are hopeful we'll have to have a quick business meeting prior to that board retreat in order to ratify the PVFT contract, so stay tuned for that announcement. If the business meeting is necessary, it'll be announced for the community. After that, our next, we have a reorg meeting scheduled for the beginning of July, and then our first, our next business meeting is not until August.
Just seems too far away. What am I going to do?
Sure, I'll see you.
Board members, anything you'd like to talk about?
Yeah, so many accolades for Joe, well deserved, but I see Joe here whenever we meet. And Joe, you have one of the best sense of humor. I've said this before, but it is the truth. He can make me laugh in a second, the things he says, under his breath sometimes. And...
Sorry, I'll sit next to him.
It is, and it's so appreciated. I'm going to miss you, Joe. I really mean that.
Thanks.
You're a righteous guy. The other thing I'd like to say is that I'm so pleased with the CSEA and the contract that they settled. It's a very fair, equitable contract. Those individuals work so hard, and they're deserving of a good contract, and I believe and I know the district has provided them that. So kudos to the CSEA membership as well.
Anything else?
Just to echo what everyone has already said about Joe and Sam, you stole my line about humor, because I was going to mention that also. But Joe, it's been a pleasure, and I've learned a lot from you, and please send me over all the spreadsheets that you have. I meant to tell you that. So thank you for all your service to the community, and it's been appreciated. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Yeah, just thank you, Joe. Now you can sleep.
You can throw popcorn at us on the TV.
True.
I have a few questions.
Okay.
Um, the... If you were a utensil, what do you tend to say? No, I was tempted to ask her, I was tempted to ask her what, you know, what, something that we didn't know, because I remember so clearly when I, when we interviewed Margaret, Margaret said aerobic dance. And I was like, I didn't even know what that is, so I was, I was just very interested. Anyway, question on the elementary school ultraviolet water filtration system. This is so, you know, not going to make a difference for another time, but I'm just wondering where that sits now.
So the UV filtration system that we've had there is too old to be replaced. So we have, sorry, too old to be fixed. So we have a replacement unit that's been on order for several weeks already. So as soon as that filtration system comes in, it'll be used to replace the old one, and everything will return back to normal. The chlorination system's still working, the $200,000 of carbon filtration that the water goes through, it's blessed by a priest on the way out, and it's good to go. So it's, it's the cleanest water around. Unfortunately, we can't drink it because there's no UV light shining on it, but as soon as that is fixed, it'll go back to...
I can go to Spencer's and get one. Additionally, they were, we were talking about, I was just thinking about graduation and streaming that we typically do, but I just then triggered the idea of, are we still on target as a district for the new athletics streaming system?
Yes. So we'll be moving away from local live and onto huddle. I know that the cameras have already been on order, and I'm looking at tanks, I feel like...
Tomorrow at 9:00.
Tomorrow at 9:00, Stan the Man says, so it'll be here. So yeah, that transition's going.
He's so trusting.
And never tells a lie.
I have no more micro things to ask, but I do have a bigger thing. The, the addition of the middle years program, that'll take obviously some time for that to filter through the system. I do hope, the one thing that I feel might be missing from the district at this point is a longer-range strategic plan. And I think I teased this in a conversation, or something I wrote that you might have seen, Jeremy, about, you know, kind of PV 2035, which essentially is, it's 100 dear as a school district, and that would be, I think, seems to be, you know, that's, you know, 13 years or now 12 years from now, which is an entire cadre of students from beginning to end, which kind of ties into the back of my mind. I remember coming in and fully kindergarten being one of the first things they implemented, just the idea of what do we want to be when we were 100, right? And I think by doing that, it also means that our high school's going to be old too. I can't do the math. But I think, you know, as that stuff is, is starting to filter through, I think maybe it's a long-term goal to think more long-term as to where the district's going to be after, you know, you're not here in 15 years, and nobody on this board will be here in 15 years.
Simone's going to come back and be...
Well, okay.
You want this seat, Simone, when you come back?
I'll get my medical degrees, and then I'll come back and get a degree in education.
But something, I think that's something that the district would benefit to kind of look to that, that, that 100-year market. I mean, I know it's just a point in time, but it seems to be an appropriate point in time to think about kind of a bigger, what's the vision? And then, I guess finally for me, it's been a pleasure working with all of you, with all of you. I blame Jeannie Denike for all of this. She's the one who got me into this.
She is definitely responsible.
Jeremy, it's been fantastic getting to work alongside you as a partner. I am so thrilled that the district has you here at the helm, and I'm going to miss the kind of this whole thing, but I'm glad to have been here with you, and I appreciate all the work that I've done together with you. So thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Okay.
I just want to say thank you as well. I mean, I haven't been here as long as he has, or done as nearly as much as he has. However, it's been a really amazing experience being here with you all, being able to like, just use my voice, and it's taught me like a lot, being here. And I really do thank God for it, because like, I've learned to be like much more like articulate and like concise to my thoughts, even though I'm a little long-winded still. But I'm really glad that I'm able to be here and like get all this experience. And I also thank you all for your constant encouragement all the time. Every time you all see me, it's just such great words and a great encouragement from you all, so I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
It's not on the agenda, but I'd like a motion to convene an executive session for one matter of the employment history of one particular person.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night and thank you.